Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. First, we will go with our roll call.
Sarah Brock, John Krieger, Pat McKee, Jennifer Paoli, Joanna Reyes, Jane Roche, Cory Sillers, Lance Trollop, Jim Boucher.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Next, I have a proclamation to read for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas Native Americans have inhabited this continent since time immemorial, whereas Wisconsin is home to 11 federally recognized Native Nations and one federally unrecognized Nation, including Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, Forest County Powhatanami, Ho-Chunk Nation, Makutere Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, Lactiflambo Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, Oneida Nation, Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, Mo-Lake Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, St. Croix-Chippewa Indians of Wisconsin, Stockbridge-Munsee Community Band of Mohican Indians, and Brother Town Indian Nation. Whereas throughout Wisconsin's history, Native American leaders such as Ashawee Gee She Go'Qua, Great Chief Buffalo, Chief Oshkosh, Chief Yellow Thunder, Walter Brissette, Truman Lowe, Ed Adir, Patty Lowe, and Ernie Stephens have defended Native rights and promoted sovereignty and prosperity for their people. Whereas the state of Wisconsin recognizes the historic, cultural, and contemporary significance of the Indigenous Peoples of this region, without whom the building of the state and its cities would not have been possible. Whereas organizations like Great Lakes Inner Tribal Council, Native American Tourism of Wisconsin, and the American Indian Chamber of Commerce promote the sovereignty, resilience, cultural richness, and success of Native Americans. Whereas the sovereignty of Wisconsin's Native Nations is affirmed in Executive Order Number 18, wherein the state of Wisconsin recognized our unique legal relationship with Native Nations and directed cabinet agencies to engage Native Nations with the same respect accorded to other governments. Whereas since 1991, with the passage of Wisconsin Act 31 of 1989, all public school districts and teacher training programs are required to provide instruction on the history, culture, and tribal sovereignty of Wisconsin's 11 federally recognized American Indian nations and tribal communities. Whereas the state of Wisconsin has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism toward Indigenous Peoples in our state and in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality and exacerbates disproportionate health, education, and social outcomes. Whereas the state of Wisconsin is committed to closing the equity gap for Native Americans through policy and practices and ensuring access to opportunity for Native Americans and their communities. Whereas the state of Wisconsin recognizes the historical sacrifices of Indigenous Peoples and greatly values the social, economic, and cultural contributions they make. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by the International Conference on Discrimination Against the Indigenous Population in the Americas, a delegation sponsored by First Nations leaders in the United States. Now therefore, I, Tony Evers, Governor of the state of Wisconsin, by the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the state, hereby declare the second Monday in October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in Wisconsin, recognize the immense importance of the Native Nations to this state and reaffirm the significance of the Native Nation's sovereignty, culture, and history, recommit to the state's efforts to promote the well-being and growth of Wisconsin's Native American communities. In addition to requirements under 1989 Wisconsin Act 31 mandating public school instruction on Wisconsin's Native Nations, strongly encourage Wisconsin schools and educators to use Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to engage students across the state on the importance of Native American history, culture, and tribal sovereignty. Strongly encourage Wisconsin businesses, organizations, public institutions, and local governments to recognize and celebrate Indigenous Peoples and cultivate strong relationships with Wisconsin Native Nations. And last, strongly encourage all Wisconsinites to be in solidarity with Indigenous Peoples throughout the state. Signed by Governor Evers. Moving on, next, we have our excellence in action from Hawthorne Hills Elementary. If you want to come forward, and there is a microphone up there. If you can just tap that button, it'll turn green.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Can you guys hear me okay? My name's Phil Beck, I'm the principal of Hawthorne Hills School. I'm joined here by four of my school ambassadors. We'll start over here, and I'll just let them introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Lennox Mathood, and I am in second grade.
Hello, my name's Harlow Miller, and I'm in second grade.
Hi, my name's Michaela Seefel, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Susanna McUnia, and I'm in fifth grade.
So our school ambassadors are one of our school jobs. And that's actually what we're here to talk about today. It's just our student leadership jobs and how we empower kids to take on different roles across the school. Our ambassadors do some things that are pretty specific. I will let Suz-- was that Susanna or Michaela's job to talk about the jobs? I'll have Michaela talk about the ambassadors.
One thing we do is welcome students and parents to our monthly assemblies. Another thing we do is welcome our guests to our school and show them where to go. For example, this morning, we had firefighters visit our school and for a fire safety program. And we walked them to the library and helped them set up for their presentation. Finally, another thing that we do is change the words on the sign in front of the board.
So you saw this group changing that sign on the front of the building on the first slide. And this slide just shows a few examples of our student jobs. I won't go through all of them, but we're really trying to get kids interested in helping out at school. So I'll just highlight a couple, our morning announcement crew. They've really taken over the morning announcements, something traditionally I was doing as a principal, over loudspeakers. And that's the two girls pictured on this slide. What they do is they plan the announcements, they kind of script it. They have a list of birthdays and lunch menu items. And they go through and they remind kids of upcoming events. And so every morning, they do the announcements in the morning. So that's something that shifted from being very adult-driven to something that's very student-driven now. Our photographers, as an example of a student job that is really pretty simple. We have kids that bring their iPads to assemblies or other events. And they take photos, and then we hope that some of those photos can work their way into our bi-weekly newsletters, into some of our end-of-the-year slideshows, our yearbooks. So it's all of the jobs. We've really tried making sure that they're meaningful and purposeful and not just fluff that we're having kids do, but it actually has some meaning to it. Safety Patrol's an example of a job that's been around for a long time. And really, that's something that's more of our fourth and our fifth graders. But most of the jobs have really opened up to all grade levels. I guess we even got a couple of second graders up here. Harlow's been an ambassador since first grade. So really trying to empower all kids and empower them in many different ways. Cassie, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. I'll have Susanna talk about the process on what kids do when they want a job. And I'll have Lennox, if you wouldn't mind passing out the job applications to our board members. They can see what that looks like. Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
First, we look at the jobs posted on the big board outside the gym. Second, if there's a job that we want, we take an application, fill it out, and return it to our teacher. If we get the job, then there's an adult who trains us and helps us get started with the job.
It is fun watching kids fly to the board and kind of get those jobs, like a traditional job board. We are kind of always in the process of thinking of other jobs that we could create. And obviously, right now, not all kids have a job. So we're, you know, just continuing to process what are some other positions that we could post? And then it's a matter of finding advisor, then working with those kids. So it's kind of fun watching the applications come through. I'm the advisor for the ambassadors, but it's also a way of really just empowering many adults across our building. They don't have to be a teacher. They could be a pair, our custodians work with a group that's helped do some, that helped clean up the lunch and the breakfast after our meals. Oh, thanks, Harlow. So Harlow's giving me a warning here that I'm at five minutes. So yeah, thank you, Susanna, for walking us through that process. These are some of our MRA scores. I know you guys have seen MRA scores in the past. I think Lucas Bart at Wausau East just presented that a few weeks ago. So we've seen some really positive growth. The school climate piece is probably one that's a little bit broader. Hard to know how much the student leadership jobs play into that. But I'd like to think that it does have some impact. I mean, we're really talking about student belonging, getting kids to take ownership in the school. So I would like to think that these jobs are contributing to those scores, at least to some degree. So do you guys have any questions for our students, for our ambassadors?
I've got one. Could I just ask, I'm sorry, the little fifth grader?
Susanna?
Susanna, what is your favorite job been so far?
I don't really have a favorite job.
You just like them all? Oh boy, I could use you at work. That would be great. You think Mr. Sillers is qualified for any job?
Yeah.
I don't know. He's got to fill out one of these applications.
Yeah, I'm not so sure he's going to make it past the... Any other favorite jobs you guys have? None? Any that you don't like?
We do have some kids that have multiple jobs. I'm not sure, do any of you have a second job besides the ambassador?
I have one. Last year I did.
You did it last year? Why don't you talk about that, Michaela?
Last year, I had the job as the blessing leader. So basically, every Friday, there's these bags with foods, and we go pass them out down to classrooms.
Great.
Is this done at any other elementary school?
It is encouraged to leader me, so I wouldn't be surprised with other schools. We really took this on last year, kind of mid-year. So we're still early in the process in figuring out what works and what doesn't work. Just for example, our, the kids who do the student announcements, we're finding there's a lot of benefits, but it's also sometimes just hard to hear right after breakfast in the gym. So that group's already started talking about, well, could we do this differently? Could we go on the speakers? Could we maybe record it and do it more like a newscast and then send it out via email? Where teachers could just show their class on the screen. So that's one of the neat things about the jobs as well is we're really trying to get kids to do some problem solving around what's working, what's not working. But yeah, to answer your question, I'm not totally sure, but it is a piece of leader me.
I just think it's, I mean, it's a really innovative idea. It's kids excited, obviously, about different things, very practical skills. You know, looking at a job board, filling out an application. I mean, I think it's a great, great program. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all for coming, you did a great job. Thanks for the timekeeping, too. We got to keep these guys on track. All right. Thank you. Next, we have public and student comment, if we have any. There are none, so we will move then to approving the consent agenda, which may include appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes of the regular session of September 9th, 2024, closed session of October 7th, 2024, payment of bills, budget status, and investment report, school board member salaries, donations to the district, which include Kassirik Subaru, QuickTrip, White Book Corporation, Alamos Championship Martial Arts, Rosemary and Kenneth Rupee, The Needle Workshop, Pilgrim Lutheran Church, Sheldon Ruse, the McDonald Foundation, and John Van Uston. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district.
So moved.
First and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us then to old recurring business from the Education Operations Committee meeting. We have an elementary task force update. And Mark Roffers is here virtually. Go ahead, Mark.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Nice to see all of you again, at least from a distance. I'm here to present a little bit about what the task force has been up to since we last met or I last presented before the board in August. And it's been quite a bit. And I have a short, I think, PowerPoint show to share with you all to get us through that. One moment as I bring that up. Okay, hopefully, you're seeing the slide on screen in full screen that says elementary facility plan board updated. Please let me know if that's not what you see.
Yeah, it's not in full screen, but yes, we can see it.
Oh, okay, I understand now. Let me just try one thing real quick. Try one more way. Does that any better?
No, now we just see you and Jim. So define better.
Okay. Pardon me, hopefully, you're seeing my kids now for just a short time, and then I'll bring the presentation over. You'll see me looking up. I'm not gazing into space, but at my second screen.
There we go.
All right, good. Thanks for your patience. So this presentation is just to guide you through what we've been up to with the task force over the last three meetings in September and early October. You'll remember the task force chart, which the board assigned in June to develop and recommend elementary school facility options by the end of this year. Focused particularly on whether the number of elementary schools in the district ought to be reduced, and if so, the who, what, where, and's. And that should be based on student enrollment projections, a little nod to 4K, and other option evaluation criteria that has been approved by the school board. You'll recall back in August, you endorsed five criteria. They're summarized here on screen, and this has been used and useful by the task force in preparing and evaluating different facility options going forward. And there's a lot more detail behind these few words. What we've been up to with the task force. In September, the task force made preliminary suggestions on the number of elementary schools that might maybe close, which schools might be candidates for that, and other broad components of a desired facility option. And I'll get into more on what that all means in a moment. While we're transitioning in October to presenting and evaluating an initial set of detailed facility options. And that's based on the schools the task force identified as potential candidates back in September. We'll move on in November to consider potential variations, tweaks to different options, and then start to narrow them down and accumulate them, and I'll explain what that means in a moment. And then with the goal for the last task force meeting in December to finally prioritize and provide a recommendation to you all and figure out how best to present that with our help. We prepared a lot of information to help support the task force in its work. This matrix or table describes all the 13 existing comprehensive elementary schools by basic stats, current conditions, some cost data that got filled in a little bit later, and how big the building is in terms of student capacity and how many students we anticipate it being filled with, assuming no change in this particular case. So this has been a resource that the task force has had in front of it for a few meetings now to help keep the elementary schools straight. As I mentioned earlier, we had a discussion in September that, following which the task force provided advice as to how many schools should we look at for potential closure as part of this work. A challenging assignment, no doubt, but using the criterion, those five criteria that you see in gray on this particular chart, the task force came to a general conclusion that we should be looking at the potential for three schools closing that received the most favorable, if you want to call it that, votes at that meeting, and with the next most favored option being two schools closing. But once we get four, and certainly above that, the numbers don't work. In other words, we would have too many students for the number of school spaces that you'd have. We also asked the task force, different ideas have come up over the course of our summer and early fall meetings to evaluate other broad components of facility options. I'll direct you to the center of this chart. The task force wants to consider recommendations that may phase in school closures or consolidations, where you see the more buyers, that means more task force members supported that particular component. And a little bit off of scope or charge, the task force also felt that the district should look at closure of other school facilities as part of this and consolidation of functions, like administrative and meetings that you have there. We had on either end, other options and ideas that didn't get as much traction when we came to a vote or a ranking. They included on the left-hand side, building a new school building to potentially deal with the closure or consolidation of older buildings. And then way on the right side, we have had considerable discussion at task force about providing wraparound care. And you can see there are more task force members than not suggest they did not support further discussion. So this has helped us hone in a little bit on the number of schools that we should be looking at and, you know, time element at least, for how this may all play out. We presented some information on what we call potential one-to-one school consolidation pairings. The general idea presented here on screen, the concept being that if one school closed, school A, that all the students would go to another existing school in the district, school B in this particular case. And then the alternative is that were a particular school to close, that some students would go to one school and others to another. And I can tell you that there's very few direct options, these one-to-one consolidations, that really work when we're not talking about grade group changes as part of this effort. So we did present in one of our September meetings the four potential one-to-one school consolidation pairings. They're up here on the screen. One of them involved John Marshall students going to Hawthorne Hills. Another Franklin to Hawthorne Hills. Hewitt-Texas, being the smallest school in the district, has some options to go to other nearby schools on a one-to-one basis. And Rib Mountain has the potential to go to South Mountain, but probably requiring a small expansion in classroom space to South Mountain to make the numbers work for enrollment. So one of the things we shared with the task force and they agreed with is that one-to-one pairings in general are not easy to do. And so we're going to have to look at these alternatives of potentially closing a school and having some students go to one school and some students to another. The task force is an interesting slide. The task force then dove into all 13 schools with a range of different data, detailed discussion at a small group level. And following those discussions, each member had the opportunity to identify whether one of the 13 schools was a core candidate for potential consolidation or closure. And on the flip side, whether a school was unlikely for consolidation or closure. And then the group in the middle, where task force members weren't quite sure or felt it could go either way. The, you know, one thing I'll direct you to before I move on is that the, all of the task force members identified GD Jones, Riverview, South Mountain, and Statine as unlikely candidates for consolidation or closure. So that narrowed our universe a little bit, certainly. What we've done since then is begun to look at options, detailed facility options, that would result in the closure of one of these candidate schools. There's six of them that got candidate votes. And we've begun to present options that would shift some of those students in the event of closure of those schools to one of the other schools, or two, within the school district. So obviously, this is getting to be important information that's affecting people, and we're wanting to emphasize that we're remaining in the exploring stage. The task force has not made a recommendation on any particular school. It will be talking and has been about particular schools at particular meetings, but it's far from a recommendation. And when it does come, it will be a recommendation to you all, not a decisions. We did discuss three options at our last meeting just a few days ago. They were the potential consolidation Hewitt-Texas with students going to Riverview, Grant with some students going to Jefferson and others to Lincoln, and Rib Mountain with some students going to South Mountain and others going to GD Jones. And there's more options to come. How we're presenting these options is through maps that would show the attendance areas that would result from these consolidations. In each case, the current attendance area boundaries affect one another. So it's just a matter of expanding one. In this case, this shows the, what is currently the Riverview and Hewitt-Texas separate attendance areas combined into one with students attending Riverview in this particular option. In each option, the task force has a dashboard, as we're calling it, that compares the option to each of the five criteria. There's a lot that's populated in this dashboard, different metrics from expected costs or savings, building capacity to enrollment, the suitability of the schools for modern education, how many students are impacted by the change, and how close students would remain to their school if that particular change happened. So that was the first option presented in order, but we had an option of Grant consolidating with Jefferson and Lincoln also presented a few days ago. That has its own dashboard with its own impacts that are different from the Hewitt-Texas, the Riverview model I just had up on the screen. And then a third option, a notion of Rib Mountain consolidating predominantly with South Mountain, but some of the northern neighborhoods instead going to GD Jones. The task force and its own dashboard, too. The task force spent quite a bit of time, over an hour, evaluating those three, first three consolidation options. A lot of numbers on this screen. The short story is that the most task force members felt that Hewitt-Texas to Riverview option met the five criteria. Most felt the Grant to Jefferson and Lincoln met the five criteria. And many, but fewer, felt the Rib Mountains to South Mountain and GD Jones met the criteria. So where we're going from here is we will have three or four additional options that the task force will discuss at its October 30th meeting. And then we'll take it from there to that kind of process of narrowing, but also stacking these potential options upon one another to get to that potentially, that three closure consolidation model that I discussed a little bit earlier. consolidation model that I discussed a little bit earlier. So with that, I'm happy to conclude the presentation and answer any questions or hear any comments may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions from board members?
Just a couple. I guess I want to make sure the, the cost per student mark, which I think is a great metric to use in the decision-making process, will the recommendations come with a future cost per student should an action be taken? So if you take Grant to Jefferson and to Lincoln, will we then be able to see revised cost per students for Jefferson and Lincoln to see what the impact is?
I would say that may be a bit challenging. I'll think more about that before giving you a final answer. What we are able to show is based on at least the last three years of cost data, how much in operating costs, utilities, et cetera, the district may save. And based on exclusion only, how much in staff savings, if we're eliminating sort of redundancy, the district may be able to change. You can see those if you squint under Criterion One. I don't know how easy it will be to show operating costs at the new school and how that might change. There would be, likely be some additional changes, and you see it on that cell, associated with the additional busing. Because sort of by definition, with a couple of exceptions, there will be students that are in current walking zones who will no longer be within walking zones of their new school. So there will be some additional costs associated with busing.
Okay. Okay, yeah, anything that we could do to get a future cost per student? I mean, it's just an objective way to measure, you know, is this really making the fiscal impact that we, that we think it's going to? But, okay, thank you for that. The other one, I saw in, I think it was in your memo, a summary memo to the board, that there was a question about whether or not to, you were kind of looking for board direction on considering, discussing fifth grade to middle schools again, if I read, I think that was in one of those. From my perspective, I'd be curious to get, obviously, other board members' perspective. I did not think that that was in the purview of this group.
Right, and that's what, that's the direction we've given, but I think what Mark is saying is that the group itself keeps asking, are you sure we shouldn't consider that?
Right. Right, and I just, yeah, that's why I brought it up, just to reiterate, I don't think that that's anything that we were considering or asked this group to consider.
Right.
I think, for lack of a better term, I think the task force has received the message that we've delivered. We just wanted to make sure that we were on, we continue to be on some footing with respect to that. And we showed, not only just said frankly, the board has asked us not to look at that, but there's very practical reasons why that doesn't really make a lot of sense under the current proposal.
Okay. And then the last item I have was just, I guess, clarification for everyone. I'm guessing that just because you mentioned in, or you saw in the feedback from the task force, that certain elements may not have gotten a lot of support right now, like the wraparound daycare item, for example, that doesn't preclude us from considering that at some point down the road in a revised structure. So I, you know, because that may be important to, in fact, I think it is important to a lot of people, I just don't want people walking away from this process as, you know, either that are part of this task force or that are listening and keeping up on it, obviously. I don't want them to think that something like that is not going to be considered down the road. I don't think that's the case at all. In fact, something like daycare, and, you know, there's probably a few other items that would likely be considered again in the future, and frankly, maybe a bit more straightforward to address, you know, in a consolidated environment.
Thank you. That idea plus several others have come up. Our assignment, when we're dealing with a, you know, 30 to 40 member group of people, which is what we've had, is to keep people focused on the assignment. And so, and the assignment being the charge, you know, tell us how many elementary buildings you think we'll need, and, you know, provide as much detail on which ones that might be of consolidation candidates. So I think there's good ideas there. There's a few others. You might see an enumerated list of bullets that summarize the ideas that were discussed and by the task force as part of the report that comes from that group.
Thank you.
Any other board member questions? I have one, Mark. With the discussion of some of the school consolidations, has there also been any examination of boundary moves? In other words, like, I looked at the map that you showed us, I think it was the Hewitt Texas into Riverview One. You'll see where that boundary goes, and it gets very close to Hawthorne Hills. Is that a step too far? The group hasn't gone that far, or has the group also talked, hey, if this happened, maybe it would make sense to move this boundary by a block or a mile or whatever it might be? Has that discussion taken place?
The group has definitely discussed it, and with respect to, you know, exactly the point you're making. And those could be the variations that come forward in November. Hey, I kind of like this option, but maybe you should think about moving this neighborhood over to here instead. So that could definitely come. You know, one of the challenges with Hewitt Texas in particular is its student population is relatively small and relatively spread out. So if you pick a neighborhood or two, put them into a different school from everyone else, you could have literally six, seven, eight, nine kids that would be going to one school, and all the other 90-some would be going to a second school. So that could challenge the criteria of trying to, you know, minimize impact on students, particularly for those six that are kind of separated from their peers.
Yeah, it brings up the challenge to, and it, yeah, it brings, yeah, it brings forward the challenge that we'll have too of thinking, not just of the students impacted in the immediate future, but the students for the next, you know, 40 years, where, do you want to make a change that makes sense for all of the future students that live in that area that are only a half a mile away from Hawthorne Hills for the next 30 years? But it might be bad, and I don't even know if anyone right now lives in that area, I'm just using it as an example, but it might be harder on the students there right now to get split from somebody they went to school with last year. So I think those are some of the hard discussions that have to happen.
A couple of quick thoughts. The task force will see some additional options, as I mentioned, at its next meeting. And there will be some of those options where things kind of get shuffled around a little bit for kind of best fit among the options. And then the second thing, I guess I'll say, and we're continuing to coach the task force about is that it's easy to get hung up on lines on a map, of course, it's very visual, but we're encouraging them not to. That the, the general goal here is to make sure that these things work or could work, with the idea being that later on, and I would suggest this would be after the task force, the specifics on where exactly the lines are drawn could be sorted out after a decision is made on whether a school should be consolidated or not. Along with other things like grandfathering and accommodating the current student population, perhaps while thinking more long-term that a particular area might be better suited in a different school.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just because you kind of talking about it, I had brought up that same idea, you know, a year, year and a half ago during the first conversation of, you know, maybe those six students need to continue with their classmates, and, but anybody new coming to that neighborhood now is going to be assigned to the other school for the future kind of idea, but you've already thought of that and you're working through that, so that's, that's great to make that impact as little as possible to the students.
Yeah, we certainly coached the task force to think long-term, so I appreciate the comment from the board here tonight and to reinforce that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. See you all soon.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, our next item is a reference construction bid update. Josh Vigut at our last meeting presented a brief update on the recent bid for the construction project at Montessori and Horace Mann. Is there anything new to add, Josh? Nothing new, so that's just informational tonight. And then the next item is new business, which is the Wausau School District Code of Conduct. This is listed for action, but we're not actually anticipating taking action on it. And we're going to have a presentation on the progress made on revising the code of conduct.
There isn't much of a presentation. Basically, the process that we're proposing or suggesting at this point is usually we bring code of, activity code changes in May to the board. For the last couple of years, we haven't really come up with, there's been things that have come up, and instead of making those last year, we decided last May that it was probably time to do an over, not an overhaul, but a very thorough review of the entire document. So we kind of put that in place last May or put it on our agenda that this, that was one of the things we do this year. Through that process, Cassie actually helped out with that in identifying when she went to sign the activity code when she registered her kids this year, that like, there's a few things in there, like the nondiscrimination clause that's in the one that was posted wasn't current and up to date. So we talked early with Kale and Katie to talk about that we want to get this process rolling. So the first step in that was kind of to offer our current code up to the attorney to kind of look at and make sure that some of those, some of those, what's the word I'm looking for, some of those clerical or some of those housekeeping type things in there were up to date, making sure they were aligned with our district's policies and procedures. And he's kind of done that, and Cassie has it up there right now. So the items in red are changes that he's recommended from just looking at that. We're not officially asking tonight for those changes to be adopted. Basically, what we're asking is if we can kind of implement those as the current document that we're then taking to our overall committee to review it. And there really isn't any, there really isn't any fundamental changes that the attorneys made for that document. A lot of them is just kind of getting rid of some redundancy, making sure our policies and procedures are up to date on the way they're stated in there. So basically, what we're asking tonight is for permission to kind of make those changes so we can use that document as our starting point. The process that we're looking at doing, we've met two or three times so far with the principals from the four secondaries as well as the athletic directors. Katie's been there as well as Kale, I think, has been at one of the meetings. So basically, what we're looking at doing, once we have the document set that we want to use, is create a committee that would be made up of the principals from the four schools, the activities directors from the four schools, a coach member from all four schools, and advisor, activities advisor from the two secondary, from the two high schools, a student rep from the two high schools from an athletics standpoint, student rep from an activity standpoint from both high schools, and then parent reps from all four schools, choosing parents who kind of have students who are kind of in both athletics and activities. That's kind of our plan or proposal at this point, so we're just seeking guidance or kind of informal approval to move forward with that process. Unless I missed something or misspoke.
And I would say we're really looking for a thumbs up from the board. What we don't want to have happen is we take a modified athletic code to the committee, and they're going to be working off of that while we've changed it somewhat from where it's at right now. And so we just want to make sure you guys are comfortable with those changes. This is preliminary. It's not going to change the current athletic code for any of our current athletes or activities, and the board will see this again come spring. So it's going to be back in front of you before you take final action on it.
One of the first questions that'll be asked or has been asked is the timeline on it. The plan for this committee is to meet throughout this school year, bring the changes to you guys in May, and then those, the activity code usually becomes live on July 1st, because that's when athletic and activity registration open up for the 24, what'll be 25, 26 school year. So you guys would see a document in May is when we'd ask you to kind of make those, or maybe see it in May, vote in June. Idea that it would become live in July for next school year.
One question. So this governs the athletes. Is there a separate one for coaches? Or how was coach conduct governed?
I think that's more of a human resource question. Am I accurate?
Should it be?
It's in the employee handbook and the expectations for staff members and board policy.
Maybe we can talk about that one.
I wonder if that gets fleshed out within the committee work as well. There's going to be other folks that are part of that, parents and family members that are having discussions with the group as well.
Yeah, I think there's some benefit to, because in the student or the athlete code of conduct, athletic directors and administrators at the school are kind of the, I don't want to say the judge and jury, but isn't that the kind of the basic construct of?
The current process, and it'll be reviewed when we review it, is that so if an activity code, a perceived activity code violation happens at either school, we actually just did this last Thursday or Friday, there was an incident actually at both schools, separate instance. So we met, the current committee is made up as of both principals, both athletic directors, and then a coach slash advisor member, depending on if it's an athlete or somebody who's involved in an activity. That group meets, the families identified, or the families notified that there has been something that could potentially have been an athletic or activity code violation. That group then meets, makes a determination as to whether or not it's believed that it was, and then it's kind of enforced based on the code. I would say, in my three years, 90-plus percent of the time, they've been extremely cut and dry, and that it's got busted vaping at school, or maybe alcohol at a party, or whatever it might be. And those are, those are usually pretty, 20, the first offense is 25%. That has been the process. Obviously, that is something that we will review in this process, and having parents on board, I think will kind of give us some insight into that.
Okay. Thank you.
When was the last time a committee met to review this?
Well, this is Jeb's 15th year, and it is early on in his tenure as principal was the last time. My first year in the district was the fall of 2012, and it had been done prior to that. So there's been some, as you guys, the most updated revised edition is 2022, so there's been revisions, but a good old-fashioned review like this has been 10-plus years, going on 15, I would say.
Is this version that is in the packet, this is just some revisions then?
The attorney's revisions, yeah. And there's things in there, like, one of the things he identifies is in this document that we shared with him, like, it says you have to sign it, there's no signature page with the one we send them. Well, when they do it online, it's an electronic thing at the end, it is, if anybody gets handed a paper copy, there is a signature page attached to that. So it's just some little things like that that he made changes to. One of the things, and it kind of follows our policies and procedures, is there's a line in there that talks about behavior, unbecoming of a student athlete or whatever, that general clause, and there's some things that they don't like seeing in that part of it, so he kind of cleaned that up and kind of made a suggestion that we do that. And it's really not, doesn't change it that much, but it's probably a good starting point to kind of use his recommendation when we're moving forward with that, I would say. So one of the things that kind of sparked this as well, other than it being long, we had a, we have a situation last year where there were some social media involved. This code doesn't, has not really kept up with social media, so we think we need to take a good, hard look at that. This code does not currently speak to wave. Grading is different. So in this code, all of our grading is done quarterly at the high schools. That's what determines academic eligibility, while wave doesn't do quarter grades, and we do have more and more student athletes who are, who are involved in wave. So we're trying, I mean, those are kind of the things that have pushed this forward, saying, yeah, it's probably time to give it a really good looking over.
So this, this is the version that the committee would start with then? What you have?
If you guys give us the thumbs up, yes.
Any other questions from board members? And obviously, this is going to come back to us, but any issues with the committee starting from here and then coming back to us in May? Okay.
And I would say it's also possible that, no guarantees, it's up to Katie, just kidding. It's possible that we could maybe get it to you in May with the idea, it in front of you for a while, so you could ask, kind of ask the questions and see if we need to take it back to the committee and flesh some more things out. it back to the committee and flesh some more things out.
Yeah, not, not the last meeting before July 1st.
Correct, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have a seclusion and restraint presentation. This is an overview presentation of the 2324 seclusion and restraint report and a brief look at the data over time. The full report is included in the attachments.
Good evening, Wassa School Board. Thank you for allowing me to be here. We're going to go through a brief overview of the seclusion and restraint numbers from last year, so the 2324 school year, and just take a peek at the data over time. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. The numbers are up on the screen, so last year, the number of students involved in the intervention of seclusion and restraint was twenty-seven. So this is a slight decrease from last year. So then we report out on the number of seclusion incidents, which was twenty-three, restraint incidents, twenty-seven, combined incidents, so they involved both seclusion and restraint, eight. So we had a total of fifty-eight incidents last year of seclusion and restraint, and again, a slight decrease compared to the incidents from 2223. So as we kind of look over time, we're trending down, which is a good thing. The number to really look at is the number of students involved. So when we think about the incidents over time, those can vary depending on the individuals involved, but the number of students involved has decreased over time, which I think is a positive. I also think seclusion and restraint can be a very necessary intervention when we're thinking about student safety, but it's a very small number of students that are involved in that type of intervention in our district. Thank you, and any questions?
I have one question. Do you track in any way the location, where this happened, you know, a generalized classroom versus a specialized classroom versus a Fayette situation versus a cafeteria? Do you track that in some way to try to figure out, you know, what is successful and what is not successful for any particular student?
We do.
Okay. I'm not saying you have to give that to us, but I just wanted to make sure that that was something that was, that was tracked. Okay.
So we look at date and time, and of course, when those types of interventions are necessary, our school teams are getting together to, to look at those students, their needs, situations, the potential need for any training, or altered programming, so.
Good. Any other questions from board members?
I'll just ask clarification, just because I, well, this is the whole student body, right? This isn't necessarily a certain group of students that we track data on, it's just everybody.
Everybody, and we, as a school district, are obligated to report any time this occurs underneath our roof. So this is out of our full student body.
Good question. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we don't have anything new coming back or coming from education. So we will move then to open forum. Any board members have professional growth and development to report for the month? Okay, and Cory, do we have a legislative update?
We, I had CISA IX last week, I think it was last week, it was two weeks ago, but we had a presentation at that talking about a grant program from federal level, and we have two coordinators within CISA IX that go around and help the districts within CISA IX, and I think they help outside CISA IX if needed as well, to identify where districts are lacking in help for mental health issues, whether that's a social worker, psychologist at each school, or just a counselor, and try to help create action plans. And I asked the presenter, I said, so you, you don't have any staff, though, that go and physically help the districts solve their problems? Don't we just identify problems? I said, well, that sounds like a interesting use of federal funding, where we should maybe work on workforce development. And Al Betri, the director there, said that they do speak with the legislature members when they have their quarterly meetings with them about that topic, about how to incentivize students to go into those more specialized needs that the schools are looking for, and, because that's, that's a workforce development thing. So they're having those discussions, and that's something else that, you know, that we can, I guess, help promote whenever we interact as well, whether that's a general teaching job or these, you know, school psychologists, and then getting the, obviously, students interested, but then getting them to stay in the area instead of moving off as well, because CISA IX, or all the CISA's really, can only fill in the gaps to a certain point. And they have a labor, there's just a flat, you know, shortage of workers all around in all, all sectors, so that's what we talked about, and that's how it correlates to the legislative side, side of things.
Thank you, Cory. Superintendent Commentary?
October 6th through the 12th is National School Board Appreciation Week, so I just want to take a moment to appreciate you guys. You definitely go through some very challenging work, it's a very thankless position, but it's wonderful for our district to have a collective group of adults who care about our district and moving it forward, so thank you for all that you do.
And I ask that the board member lays on district activity report be entered into the official record. And with that, I am seeking a motion to go into closed session to discuss invoices and transportation partners pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen point eight five sub one sub E, as well as evaluation and goals of interim superintendent of schools pursuant to nineteen point eight five sub one sub C, and to reconvene in open session to take further action if necessary. I need a first and a second, and then we'll do a roll call.
Second.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli? Joanna Reyes? Jane Roche? Corey Sillers?
Yes.
Lance Trolle?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jim, you can't go into closed technically to vote.